Okay, today is Monday, March the 12th, 2018, and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are in session. We would like to welcome everyone to the boardroom tonight. And as always, we begin our meeting with a prayer and the pledge. So if everyone would please stand, Commissioner McPeters will listen to prayer, and Commissioner Brown in the pledge.
Let's pray.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us, Lord. We thank you for the rain, Father. We thank you, Lord, we can come to this boardroom tonight and meet, do the business of the citizens of this county. Father, always help us to do our best. And Father, always give you honor, praise, and glory for what you did for us. Thank you for dying on the cross, Lord. Thank you for your Son, Jesus, dear God, who saved us from our sins. Just help us tonight, Lord, as we go through this meeting. Everyone that's come present, Father, we pray that you just touch them and their families. Lead, guide, and direct. We do pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, gentlemen, we have before us tonight, you've had the opportunity to read these, the regular session minutes from March the 12th, and we have three closed sessions that were related to employee personnel matters. So what's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes as we have those?
To make a motion, we approve all and approve closing the closed session minutes.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. I ain't opposed like sign. All right, gentlemen, you have tonight's agenda before you. I do know of one item we need to add. This is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Commissioner Brown and I attended a ceremony this morning at DSS, and we're wearing our pins. The blue that you've seen around town and in town and different businesses are displaying is just to help us to remember that we need to protect our children, one of the most vulnerable groups in our county, the children and our seniors. So that's what we'll be doing tonight. And we need to go ahead and take action on a resolution from the board concerning that proclamation, so if it's all right with the board, we'll add that as item. Aye, under new business, the proclamation concerning child abuse awareness month. And are there any other additions or deletions we need to add to the agenda? Okay, there being an die here motion to approve tonight's agenda with the one addition.
Make motion approve.
Okay, the second discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed like sign. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll move to our first item on our appointment schedule, and this is a courthouse project and facilities update. We have Mr. Terry Depoister with us. He is our go-to guy. He's the director. I don't know exactly what all titles you do have under your department, Terry, but come on up to the podium, sir, and introduce yourself for those watching tonight, and go ahead and lead us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Terry Depoister, C L D Maintenance Director. And tonight, we wanted to give you a brief update. We are anticipating the construction beginning April 23rd, pending the signing of the contract, award of that to beam constructors. And with the county manager's help, certainly me helping him and him helping me with this matter, we've been working together to try to secure some areas of parking, because that's our number one concern. When the construction begins April 23rd, the immediate impact is the parking at the courthouse. We posted this out before we could give this as information tonight to you. What we're doing is during the construction, even though the construction is at nighttime, beginning at 5:00 PM, the architect and the beam constructors have asked that we vacate both levels of the parking deck during that demolition period for safety, for safety and during construction. So we're going to lose approximately 90 spaces during that time of period for anywhere from one week to two months. That again, based on how long the construction takes, the demolition takes. Again, the first phase of the project is the demolition on 1P, the demolition on 2P, and then the construction of the third courtroom. So we're doing all the outside work first out there with the, because of the weather, the less impact immediately. And then we have that area completed afterwards for a transition area during the renovation of the courthouse. What we did tonight is we produced a map that you have on the wall over here, if everybody can see that okay. And what we have is we have the courthouse right in the bullseye, right in the middle. And we secured these areas within distance of the courthouse for employees and public to be able to utilize. Down here at the farmer's market on West Henderson Street, we went through each area and we secured those, looking at them availability, 33 spaces at the farmer's market. Across from the courthouse there at the EMS parking lot, we gained about 45 spaces that's there. Of course, these lots, that's total availability if it's empty. Some of them are already currently being used. They're going to be used in the daytime with regular business, but we do have the availability to use those during the courthouse construction. The jury parking lot listed straight across there at Court and Garden has 35 spaces. If you go on up North Garden Street, right up through here, we have the McKinney Lot that we lease. Currently, Department of Social Services Transportation is using that with Department of Social Services employees. And we have about 30 spaces at that lot. Across the street from that, the Bank of America Lot and the First Bank, we secured an agreement with both of them. The Bank of America Lot has 24 spaces on the lower end. The First Bank has 26 spaces. So between all of those, within a safe walking distance to the courthouse and availability for both the public and the employees to use. Our goal is, is that the employees have a safe place to park, allowing for the public to be nearest to courthouse administration conducting business. Any questions about those auxiliary parking lots? Any question or concerns about that?
Terry, have you thought too also about New Manna Baptist Church and their parking lot and/or the mech over here?
Jury parking lot. That's located going right on, Mr. Chairman, to the jury parking lot. You see it? We've secured that at New Manna.
You got that for jury.
On East Court. What we did is we needed one particular area just to secure for jurors in the event of a trial. So after our pre-construction meeting, the district attorney released information that they would be handling a murder trial for approximately two to three weeks beginning in May. So we have secured that as a dedicated jury parking lot. Our intentions are that jurors, they're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of 450, anywhere from 350 to 450 jurors to seat that 12 to 14 jury. So bringing in anywhere from 50 to 100 people per day, and we will start them right there at that jury parking lot in a safe area. And our anticipations are that we will shuttle them from the jury parking lot to the courthouse till that 12 to 14 jury is seated. Once they're secured, then they will come back across to the regular dedicated jury parking lot and be able to travel just back and forth at their leisure, as the court allows. But during that jury pool, we will secure them in New Manna.
Okay.
And the other one you mentioned, Mr. Chairman?
The McDowell Event Center, Larry D. Miller, whatever he's calling it.
No, sir, we did not. We did not approach them on that lot down there. We tried to stay anything that was already public parking or already in our control, that we could control that.
Once construction's done, how much parking are we losing?
After construction. Then we're still losing about 40 spaces. Almost half of it. And on the top parking deck, part of the construction will be improvements where it is a controlled access gate at that one-way ramp that goes back and forth. So that changes the top parking deck to judicial and staff, law enforcement. And then we have to reevaluate all the parking spaces to where to accommodate everybody.
Is there any particular reason why we haven't approached, Mr. Miller? I mean, that's as close as a farmer's.
No, sir. We hadn't, because we started closest in a circle outside the courthouse. It just went out. We were able to secure, you know, a couple of hundred before we even got to that.
We can make contact.
Sure. Sure, be glad to.
It's close.
Sure can. Any other questions you had, concerns about the parking?
I can mention briefly, if you don't have any questions about parking, we do have a, the L G C does meet tomorrow afternoon. Allison and I plan to be on the call. Should take 15 to 30 minutes. And hopefully, it'll be approved at that point. We don't have any reasons to doubt that it won't be approved at some point, but sometimes, we've had experience where, for whatever reason, they didn't approve it that first time. We don't foresee any issues with our audit or anything wrong with the application, but there are some fairly new members of that commission that have just a different way of doing things. But hopefully, it'll fly through tomorrow, and we can start, or we can sign contracts towards the end of this week. And construction can start on 23rd, like the contractors are planning.
Sounds good. Moving forward.
We did have one other item, since Terry was here, if it's okay, under the facilities update. I notified the board that McDowell Hospital had terminated their lease on the senior center space below the senior center. For many years, they've had the, well, it used to be internal medicine there, and I still call it that sometimes, but I think more recently, it was Ash Orthopedic.
Since 2012.
And Radiology. I need to catch up with the times. But they did vacate that space with the new medical office building that was constructed on the hospital campus. They just moved out the last of their equipment today, actually. We did make plans due to construction here to have the early voting for the primary there, starting on April 19th.
Through May the 5th.
Through May the 5th. And it's got adequate parking for that. It has handicap accessibility, internet, all those things that are necessary. But after that, we don't have plans, per se, for what to use the space for. So we've had folks from the private sector ask. We've had internal county departments ask. And so we need board direction on what to tell people for that space. So I've had numerous calls, even Friday afternoon, from folks looking to rent.
How much space is actually there?
6,600 square feet.
How many offices?
Right now, there are 20 usable offices in that space. 20 usable offices. That's excluding the main lobby area and the other user areas that are really just cutouts like where nurses station was, anything like that. But 20 usable offices, three full restrooms.
We toured it Friday after our education committee meeting, and that space is basically move-in ready. Might have taken out some sinks in what would have been a room, patient room. And Ashley, go ahead. Now, recommend us what you want to see happen with that. C L D board needs to hear that.
Right. So we've looked at the space as far as usability. Obviously, there are private interests that would want to use it, but if there was interest in the county using it, we've tried to analyze what departments would fit and would not be hindered. So you look at, for example, like your tax office, really wouldn't make sense. Some of our more public-facing departments really wouldn't fit in that facility. One of the areas that we did look at that seems to be a good, a good fit, if you think of it more as a back-office type operation, might be like your HR and your finance. I've talked to Allison and Maria, and they have looked at the space, of course. And they thought it would work for their operations, as well as the clerk and the manager could work as well, kind of half and half, but full-time.
And assist the county major team?
Possibly. There is space for several different functions there. But you could have your HR and finance, kind of your backbone, operating out of there.
Then what would you do with the space here? Who would you move in here?
There are possibilities. Right now, our tax assessing department is spread over two floors, which is workable, but ideally, they would all be together. We have several departments upstairs, Guardian Ad Line, for example, that are out of space, that have emailed a couple of times. So there's a lot of external pressure and some internal to find additional space.
So what you're saying is you would recommend to the board that we don't lease it, that we keep it for county staff to use. And I'll say this, we're, our board has made sort of a commitment. We've always tried to put all the external groups that we have to fund first, and their needs first, and talking about capital needs that they've had, buildings they've needed. And the county has got to the point where we need to do some improvement on our end in what we're doing as far as building is, that kind of thing. I know we've got William here. He's in the, he's got some plans, and we're looking at getting him a new building, get him out on Barnes Road, which would improve the response time, which saves lives when it comes to EMS. So we've got some stuff the board's going to be doing, the courthouse up here, providing for the courts. And then as part of that's going to be, as you guys know, redoing this whole thing down here, our building here. So, but we looked at the building, toured the building, and it'd be great to have, if we're going to keep it, which you know, I'm like you guys, I like the revenue. We get $50,000 a year revenue out of there, right?
I think so.
And we wouldn't have any problem leasing it, just to be straight up. We would have no problem leasing that to another group. But we've got our staff that at some point, we need to start trying to meet their needs and get them in something. I mean, McDowell County is a growing county. You know, there's people moving here. We've got a lot of positive things happening. And then for us to have our, some of our county staff in buildings that are not what you would call top grade, it's time we start looking internally a little bit. So Tony, you was there, go and talk about it.
Well, after looking at the building, I see that it would be perfect for the needs of the people in our facility here. You know, there's, as Ashley said a while ago, the tax department, they're spread upstairs, downstairs here. We could put them all on the same floor here if we moved these other offices out over to the new facility. And I think it would just, it would cut down on the parking out here. You know, you're moving a lot of the, a lot of the people that park here over there to that area, and it would open up more area here for parking, especially during this trying time we're going through with the courthouse renovation. So it would be my recommendation that we use it for the county.
And I would like, Ashley, I would like to have, give Lynn and Barry an opportunity, Matt's department, but lease these other guys a chance to walk through there with Terry and the staff we're excited about. The staff present, I will give you the details there. Staff present was Allison, Maria, Ashley, Tony, myself, of course, Terry, and Cheryl. And everybody was really excited about the potential for that space that the county could utilize. So everybody, is that correct, Terry? Everybody there was on board with that and would speak to that?
Yes, sir.
I guess maybe I'm just looking a little farther down the road, but how many folks or offices are we looking at moving that would come available here?
Roughly 14 to 15 offices.
Okay.
Including, one of the advantages you have with that space out there, very rarely do we regain an office building that we already own.
Exactly.
And ready to move in.
Right.
That's, that's a rarity with us. Being able to take one of your county functions, especially finance and human resources, all of your county departments, if I could speak in behalf of them, never ever minimize or they downgrade to any smaller than they are now. They're always gaining more personnel, more responsibilities, and more paperwork, especially those departments, the archive files that we used to keep three years, then five years, and seven years, and now 10 years.
So we're going.
Everything would go with them.
We're going to free up about 14 offices here that we can.
Offices filed, computer rooms, that's correct.
Okay.
We are constantly getting requests to the county manager, and I say, all these external departments, not just county departments, but court-related departments that are asking for more space, probation, guardian ad latum, all of them are sharing that same responsibility. The workload is getting more and more staffing and more paperwork that they have to keep on file. And they have more clients. That'll do, just like with our county services, more clients.
Another thing, too, in my opinion, if we had any available space here in this building after we utilize what we need for the tax department or whatever, you know, there's always DSS that is crowded. They're very crowded already, and this is in close proximity to them, if they needed extra room. So I think it would just be a good move.
Well, if you had to construct, if you had to construct a, that hole downstairs of that building over there, as nice as it is, you spend a lot of money. You can go ahead and gain office space right now, very, very minimal cost. That'd be a one-time cost, and then move your staff on in. So that's a, that's a plus, too. But in regard to staff, asking for direction on that, I would like for you guys to get in there and see the building. I mean, I think it's, I think every commissioner needs to look at it before we just go out and say, yeah, we'll do it. I want everybody to have an opportunity to look at it.
I can tell you, as far as I'm concerned, I say keep it for our needs before we do anything. And the next thing is, is who are we going to move? So I'm for keeping it.
Okay. Barry, just by consensus, I mean, you still need to see it, but you sort of.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you, when you look, I mean, I know there's possibility certificates of needs for out there. That's the reason I called to ask, to make sure. I know they have to move with the Dallas Center there. So, but I mean, again, it goes back to the building that we were not able to purchase, the old box factory, really, it's put us in a bind, and it's a good opportunity. And later down the road, we may have another building or two that comes available, but we don't know, unfortunately, that, you know, where we can move staff. I just, I just don't want to keep moving people everywhere around. And for the citizens, we need to kind of stay close in at all possible, because the more you spread out, the more they have to run here. And we've kind of consolidated like with the building and building and health department, wherever things at one location. And I just hate to see them continue to keep having to run from building to the building to try and coordinate all their efforts, because it becomes cumbersome to the citizens of the county. So we can keep everything close in, all for that.
Okay. Let's just take action, since it seems like the board wants to retain that building for staff purposes. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we keep this building for staff.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor say aye. All right, any opposed like sign. Okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate all you do, all your staff do. Let's move to our next item. This would be Mr. Marlon Brinkley, our library director. Mr. Brinkley, always good to see you, sir. And the floor is yours. Go right ahead.
Hey, thank you. It's always a pleasure to talk about the library. I don't waste a minute. At the Marion location, we are, we've been trying to apply for grants to purchase a wheelchair lift, because currently, if someone has a wheelchair or just has difficulty walking, they have difficulty getting on the steps. So what they'll have to do is go outside the back, go down a ramp, and then go around the building on a sidewalk, which isn't very even. And then they go down a kind of a steep ramp as well. That's still ADA compliant. And then they're able to get into the downstairs. And so, so some people, they just won't make the trip. So if they can't see what they can find at the top level, then they just go home. There's also some families who won't go downstairs, which is where the children's area is located, too. So, and this need that I think we've seen is that it's not just, I would say, for, it's easy to think of the elderly, but we actually have like several teenagers that have a wheelchair. And so they'll make the effort to go around, as well as, we also have adults who are part of like Possibilities and others, or developmentally disabled programs that we host, host programs for them at the library. And so they're in wheelchairs as well. And so, but they all make the effort to go around. And so, but it'd be great if they did. And so, part of the process we've been doing this past year and a half is applying for grants. We applied with the, the biggest grant was the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina, their People in Need Grant, which would have given us $20,000. Unfortunately, even though they came for a site visit, they checked us out. Ashley Wood and Terry Depoister did a brilliant job of representing us, and we answered all their questions. They decided that, in the end, as much as everybody else has told us, that anything dealing with sort of handicap accessibility needs to be funded by the county. And so, at least that's their viewpoint. So what we've been trying to do while all that's happening is simply to save money. You know, so we've been asking for, like, last year, we asked for $8,000. And we've also asked for $2,000 from the friends of the library, and they keep giving it to us. And so, we've asked, they've also, so they gave us $2,000 last year, and they've also agreed to give us another $2,000 for this year. And in our budget request, we'll be asking for another $8,000 from the county, again, just to hold on to it. So we're hoping that the next fiscal year, we'll be able to have enough money. And so, recently, we were told that there's an anonymous donor who was interested in giving us an additional $8,000. If, I believe, they made it sound like they wanted to see if the county would pay for the rest of it. And so, my hope is that they're willing to take the long view. And while, if we can't, you know, pay for the wheelchair lift this year, then they'd be willing to wait till next year. And so by then, I think, you know, again, we'll ask the friends for another $2,000 and, you know, see what we can do. So.
I think what we're looking for is maybe a board endorsement, and the chairman and I had talked about this, based on this anonymous donation that's been offered. Really looking for more or less a direction to staff to try to make it happen based on that donation that's sort of a challenge grant, is the way I look at it. You know, they don't want to commit and announce their name without a commitment from the county that, that we and you guys are going to follow through on it. And I can understand that. We always try very hard as an organization to look for other sources to pay for things. That's just something that we have always tried to do, and look for foundations, grants, et cetera. And Marlon has been here about two and a half years, and he's picked up on that. It's just kind of our mantra, that we're going to look elsewhere before we look inside. But like he mentioned, you know, this is, it seems to be an important project that other folks feel compassion for, but they believe that we should pay for internally. So we're starting, we haven't had a lot of negativity associated with it. I think people have accepted that it's an older facility, and, you know, they didn't have ADA back in 1967 or whenever it was converted. But I think there is a strong desire from folks that have contacted Marlon and the friends to see that it happened.
It's, I mean, if it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. And just do it.
Let me ask you this. Now, I'm looking at the Asheville elevator. They're saying 33978, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I guess the other amount of money, the total of 40, is going to the architect or whoever's the engineer?
I think we estimated that there'd be some additional costs just to have them, right, install it into the wall, just to get the electricity in the building, you know, connected. Let's see.
It's a freestanding unit, Mr. Chairman. So the only thing installation is that will come, we can provide electricity to it, that's it.
So really, the cost may be less than $40,000, correct?
Yeah, we guess it could probably be like an additional $2,000 to $3,000.
Have you, have you contacted, you know, you got Asheville, you got, you got one bid in here. Have you talked to other vendors who would do this? Is there anybody else around here that can handle that, do that? Is there anybody else around here that can handle that, do that?
No, that's a pretty-
I have not myself. It was recommended with Asheville Elevator, especially since they already do work with us, so we'd be incorporated into, I guess, their maintenance program as well. So, it seemed like there would be a good fit for us.
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see, just, just to see from other companies that could do this.
Sure.
Just get bids on it. I mean, I think you need to get three bids and then come back and see us.
Okay.
That's what I think you need, and it needs to be exactly, you know, what, what you People round off, you can round off, and there might be a little bit, like you said, a little cushion in there. So, I want, I want to see three bids, the board does, that we can look at, Marlon, and then we can make more of a decision then. It'd be good if Terry, Terry could help you with that too, but, because we need, I, you know, we would love to write a check right now to do that, but the reality is, sometimes you can't do what you want to do. And so, we want to try to see what we can do though, moving forward. So, if you, if you can just get estimates and put this back on the agenda for us to look at and review again, I think it'd be great to see what we can do to try to make this happen.
And if it's okay, we'll communicate with the donor that we're working on prices and all that.
And also, I think it would be good too, Ashley, if we could go ahead and have the newspaper or van, their radios here, and have them, in conjunction with county staff, just put it, put it out there to the public, say, "Look, we've got X amount of dollars when you get the three bids in, and you go with the most responsible, you know, bidder." But, and just say, "Look, we need $12,000 more dollars." There's people in this community who write you a check if they knew what the genuine need was. I guarantee you, you got one donor that's willing to do it, and if one's willing to do it, there's more if they know about the need. And I guarantee you, they could pay for that without any additional money, but, you know, we're gonna look at it anyway.
Terry, is that the concept like at high school, kind of freestanding, same, same, exact, okay?
Who put the one in at the high school?
Been there a while.
Been there a while.
Okay, Marlon, good job. Hey, you do great over there, and we appreciate you, and we'll have this back on the agenda to look at it again, okay?
Sounds great. Thanks for your time.
We'll keep working hard, try to make something happen.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our appointment schedule is a economic development public hearing. We have Mr. Abernathy come forward, check our economic development coordinator, and we need to go ahead and, and we'll get the statute, and we'll declare the board in a-
The statute's on there.
It's on there. Okay.
Oh. It's on his agenda, sir.
Yep.
On the paper.
Okay, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, I now declare the board commissioners in a public hearing setting. Chuck, go ahead. Or Ashley, who is on lead out?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you again with, I think, some, some good news. I was thinking about this driving up. Generally said that 75% of new job creation comes from companies that are already located in your county, not from new company locations. And so, this continues that. If you look back, we've had three expansions within the last 12 months. That would be Baldur, Baxter, and Ethan Allen. And some of those are substantial. When a company invests like that and expands, it's good for the new jobs and the new expansion, but it's also a good stabilizing vote of confidence for what we have here, where companies may be considering consolidation and locating facilities in different, in different areas. So, it's, a lot of times, the news is a whole lot better than, than what it might appear on the surface. So, we have two public hearings. What North Carolina law says, and this came from a court case, that caused the statute to change where the public purpose limitation was tested in the court system in relationship to incentives and the county and the state government participating in these types of programs. And it was ruled to be constitutional, that there is a public purpose that's met. But the General Assembly did impose requirements that have got to be met with that, one of which is a public hearing. So, as much information as can be laid out is laid out, the public has the opportunity to comment on it, and then the commissioners take action in formal session. There's different ways to do it. What McDowell County has always done is held the public hearing first for purposes of transparency, to put as much information out as we can, recognizing that not all information can be put out, because the state and the company have different, different expectations about how that would occur. Okay. So, the first one is an existing company. Again, cannot name the company. The investment that the company would make is, the public hearing notice says $4 million. That could go to, up to four and a half, and there is a renovation of, of an existing area of the company that would produce, receive new equipment and produce new product. If the expansion is successful of the company's business, then it could lead to new building construction and additional expansion. So, again, there's, there's more that is possibly going to occur. There would, your public hearing notice says 20 jobs would be created, 25 jobs would be created, but the lower number is used because that's a lower threshold that the company is afterwards responsible for meeting, and so that's good for them. But what has been discussed is 25 jobs created over, over a three-year period, and the 25 jobs pretty easily exceed a wage standard that the county, or that the company has to meet, that each county has as a, as a separate number. What the county would participate in is a program that is called the Building Reuse Program, which we participated with Ethan Allen and with Baxter's. Baldur was not using this, this program, so there's different state programs. And what this program does for permitted uses is it provides money, up to half a million dollars, based on the number of jobs that are being created, with the company responsible for half of that amount. The county responsible for 5% of the amount, and then the company responsible for 45%. So, this is really quite a bargain. For $12,500, you're basically creating 4,025 jobs and bringing those resources to bear for one of your existing companies. So, it's, you sometimes have seen much larger numbers of local funds in order to pull something like this off. So, it's really pretty good news. Been working on it for probably nine months. We have got five existing companies, including this one, considering expansion. And again, two are tonight, I will be surprised if I'm not back here next month with a third, and then there's two more that we're, that we're working with. So, things are quite healthy.
We are in a public hearing setting at this time, so we'll just start on this side of the room. If anyone wishes to speak concerning information you've heard tonight, just state your name and go ahead and speak to it. So, anybody on this side wish to speak? I see no hands. Anybody on this side? Okay?
Motion to go out of public hearing. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Okay? All right, Jim. We'll just go ahead and do one at a time. So, what's the, Mr. Wick, anything you need to add, sir?
No, sir. It's a great program, the Building Reuse, and companies send us the paperwork, we file it and get reimbursed.
I mean, for purposes of giving, giving some context to it, $4 million will bring $24,000 annually to the county. You're spending 12 and creating 25 jobs. I mean, it's, it's, I don't like to use the word that's in my mind, but it's close to being almost just obvious.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve this, Senator.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, the motion, say aye. And opposed, light sign, okay? We have a 5:45 public hearing. At this time, we'll declare the board in a public hearing setting pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1 concerning a economic development project. Mr. Abernathy, go ahead, sir.
So, we've been working on this one less, this one happened faster, probably about two months for this. It is also 25 jobs, also could lead to additional expansion if this expansion is successful. The investment is smaller, $600,000 in machinery and equipment, and the local incentive is, in order to participate in the Building Reuse Program, is $7,000. So, again, it's an, it's an amazing bargain when you think through that sometimes we have to do a whole lot more to attract this kind of investment. So.
You've got your economic development coordinator here tonight, so we'll start on this side of the room. Maybe we'll mix it up and get some response. So, does anybody on this side wish to respond to the economic development project that you've heard? What information that can be given to this time out? Nobody this side? Nobody? Okay?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, light sign. Okay, Jim? What's the pleasure of the board concerning the incentive?
Most approve incentive.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, light sign, okay? Great.
Thank you.
All right, Chuck, we look, we look forward to seeing you next month and bring us more jobs. Okay? We like jobs. We've got, we've got-
50 jobs, isn't it?
I mean, 50 jobs new tonight, and that, that's, that's good, and so let's keep moving forward.
Unemployment rate is 4.1%, the most recent data, so.
Where are we ranked in the state?
Oh, sixth in the state.
I think so, lowest.
Sixth lowest unemployment rate in the state currently.
Buckham's always lower, but we're lower than everyone else.
For those watching tonight that's not in attendance, there's 100 counties that make up North Carolina, and the information we just received from our county manager, verified by our economic development coordinator, is that we had the sixth lowest unemployment rate in the state of North Carolina. So, hats off to our current industries here that are expanding and hiring, and McDowell County stands ready to work, ready to, ready to deal when it comes to bringing businesses here. Thank you, Chuck. Okay, let's move on to our next item. Well, we're a little ahead of schedule now, so let's pick up some old business. Item A under Old Businesses, this will be the shooting range update. Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Sure, this is a fairly brief update, most old businesses, fairly brief. The NC Wildlife has been sending some consultants out to the, the site to do different studies, topography studies, which we provided some data to them already, some environmental, additional environmental studies. They continue to work towards trying to get that site ready. I mentioned last month, there is an ask out there to some of our legislators for additional funding for the access road. The legislature starts, they reconvene in about a month, and so I imagine, once they reconvene, that'll be more of an interesting topic to talk to them about, but that has been communicated on behalf of this board and the Wildlife Commission to our legislators that we would all like assistance, funding wise.
Okay. And for the record too, I think it's important, I was talking to Fisher around, that the state has only built, how many of these public shooting ranges in North Carolina?
It's less than five. There are some-
I'm thinking three, and maybe I'm wrong, but-
I think you're right.
Three, three is the number that come to mind for me.
So, here again, I want to say hats off to the board who pursued it. The board pursued the range. When Burke had opposition, we went straight after it and said, "We want it in McDowell." And the site they, they've chosen and selected is right next to I-40, and they said, "That's where they're gonna start putting shooting ranges now, because the road noise is higher than what the range would be." So, that's a very positive thing, and so we look forward to that moving and happening. Let's go to item B under Old Businesses, this will be the Stacy Hill Road Waterline Update. Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Right, so this is a little more involved. Mentioned last month, we had opened bids on this project on March 1st. Fortunately, the bids were all quite a bit higher than estimated. The lowest bid was about $300,000 higher than available funds. The engineer has suggested that we reject those bids and re-advertise and hope for a better result. And if we don't have a better result, then we'll have options, but, so you do have the bid tab, and I apologize for the scale, it's a little hard to, to read, but we had King General Contractors, Hyatt Pipeline, Fuller and Company Construction, and Hickory Sand all bid. We would ask that you reject those bids, and we can put the formal amount in the, in the minutes, but, and allow us to continue with re-advertising.
Okay, comments or questions for staff?
Make a motion, we reject the bid.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light sign. Okay?
Thank you.
Let's move to item C, this is the Catawba River Greenway Update. Mr. Wick, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So, a couple of things, I'll update us on the schedule. You have one of those hard-to-read schedules from an engineer. It's not always in plain English, but as you can see, we anticipate going out to bid in about 20 to 30 days on what we call the first part of Phase 3. That would be the old county park. The anticipation is that we will build almost a mile of greenway when we're all said and done, and so we have to be a little bit creative in how we bid and how we put all the documents together in order to keep some timelines flowing, but we do want to get that bid out very soon so we can meet all our grant deadlines. The Part F portion, which is more of the, what's under the gun, they have a July 10 start date for construction and a October 29th end date. And again, that's just the part on the county park. The portion that would go closer to Roby County Road would wrap up, it looks like next July. So, it, start on the county park portion and just keep working would be the goal. The other item under this update, one of the funding sources we had was the recreational trails program, and primarily that was SALT to fund the cross-country trail from the county park up to the high school. You have to go way back in your memory, this is something the board approved, it might have been a prior board, Mr. Hollifield was on the board. As we started to get closer to the, the grant prepar, the bid preparation, we realized there had been some staff changes in Raleigh, and they never sent the contract, and so it was suggested that we bring that before the board again for approval, or for the first time. So, we would ask your approval on this, it would provide $80,000 towards this project. And again, the goal would be to connect the county park to the high school so the cross-country team could actually have meets.
Okay, comments or questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion we approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, the motion, say aye. And opposed, light sign. Okay? Thank you, Jim. Let's move to item D under Old Businesses, the Spalding Road Greenway Update.
Right.
We've got a bridge out, don't we?
We do. This is something we've been working on, been trying to work on for several months. Again, this is the green, and I call it Spalding Road Greenway, I think on the map, and I might actually be the Bill Hanley Loop. might actually be the Bill Hanley Loop. This would be the section of between essentially the senior center and Spalding Road, that section, there's a, was a boardwalk bridge that has been washed out. And I have pictures that I could share with you, and will share with you, that shows how devastating the damage is. We have met with a consulting engineer and received a quote that was honestly very high.
How much is very high?
About $65,000. And that was just on the engineering, and that involved probably looking at this much amount of work, and we were asking for this much, and sometimes engineers do that, so we've asked them to quote on just this much, because we can only pay for this much. But what we, and so in that process, we spoke to our, in our, our local NRCS staff who are housed at Soil and Water and said, we'd really like to save taxpayer dollars and put money into the actual repair and not, no offense to pay an engineer if we don't have to. And so what we have done, we've worked with our local NRCS contact, Mr. Banner, we've met on site, and we think we have a design that will work based on his expertise that we will move forward with. We've already contacted the permitting agencies, this was Friday, because if we hire an engineer, we're talking months and months and months and months, and we'll be past the summer by the time we can really get going. So where we're at now is we're working with Mr. Banner, Mr. DePoyster, who was there earlier, we have put together essentially bid specs, and we're contacting all the appropriate contractors in the community and asking them to bid. There are some permits that are required, the state is okay, Army Corps does need to come and look at it, and so again, this slows us up, but, you know, we have to go through all the-
Is, is there, since this is an emergency where a washout occurred, so does it, as an entity, do we have to go through the whole, I mean, I know you said limited permitting, but what, I'm interested, what does the law allow us not to have to do to where we could speed this up even more? Because we've got one of the best bridge builders in the state, Ford Miller, sitting right down there, that could be out there and have that thing fixed in a short amount of time. Do we have to have, do we have to have a, all the other people involved in that?
We do have to have the permits approved, there is quite a bit of awareness, because they have been in the community lately as far as DWQ, and so if we did proceed, which has been suggested to me, not by the board but by other folks, that we proceed and ask for forgiveness, I don't think we would get forgiveness.
I wouldn't ask for forgiveness, I would just find out what legally we could do.
And we have, and we have looked into it, and we would be paying fines if we proceeded without the-
Okay, just want to make sure you-
Trying to keep us out of that, out of territory.
We don't like fines, but want to make sure.
But we have been assured that based on what we're trying to do, it, it's a site visit Wednesday, and we're as much as can be assured from a state and federal person that it should be no issue for a permit, so we're proceeding, and when I say bidding, that's emailing out to the contractor saying, please turn around and estimate as soon as you can, within, you know, we'd like to start in the next couple of weeks, but, but we're trying to keep us out of, out of newspapers and out of, out of, out of trouble.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any other comments or questions by board members? There being none. It is now six o'clock, right at six o'clock, so we'll move to our next appointment item. We have Mr. William Keller with us tonight, and William, come on up, sir, it's always good to see you in the boardroom, and, and we've got one of the best in the state in that position, so go ahead and lead out, will you?
Thank you for having us tonight. There's a number of projects that we work on in emergency services, this is one that I'm pleased to present tonight, and it has been a pleasure to work on these projects and meet the new folks and get out in the community and put our team out in the community. It's been our belief since we formed the administrative team many years ago that we are stronger if we have community input and form those partnerships on sunny days, and they definitely pay off during rainy days. And that's what I want to give an overview tonight. Just like we have done at EMS, we have tried to take emergency management and branch out into the community with a vision of integrating the whole community into the local emergency management program. Our end rego-, our end goal is to make McDowell a more resilient community through preparedness and planning. And following up on a major three-story house fire in the Grandview Peaks community in Dyersville, I think it was in 2015, we had an after action where we came together with that community and the development to talk about ways that the response could be improved and how the citizens could assist us. That fire occurred during the nighttime hours, there's many different roads in the development, it was a gated development, there was many opportunities for us to improve, working with the community, and from that, Grandview Peaks formed a community response team that assists with navigation and looked at assisting, further assisting emergency crews during an emergency. Their work led us and to talk to other communities, and through our partnership, we came to meet the fine folks at the Creston Development off of Mount Hebron Road near the Buncombe County line in the Crooked Creek community. A representative from Grandview Peaks met with the representatives from Creston at their community center and discussed ways that they could form a community response team. That's literally all it took for these folks, they hit the ground running, our office provided support when needed, but essentially has grown into a, a CERT team that is a model for, for this county, and hopefully we can replicate it in other communities. So their CERT has two main divisions, there's a number of representatives, and I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Bush to come up in just a minute, they have two main divisions of their CERT team, a planning committee which consists of subcommittees or groups looking at medical, safety, communications, legal, and documentation, and then they have their action teams which consist of medical, navigation, and communication. From this, they've had CPR for stay training, disaster preparedness, they've participated in FireWise and some of those activities, among others, which I'm sure Tom will mention when he comes. This community has nine AEDs, Automatic External Defibrillators, within the gates of, or within the gated community of Creston. Two are public AEDs that are accessible from the roadway there in a secure area, and then seven other defibrillators that are in the private houses. They've built communication infrastructure to where, when Crooked Creek's first responder tones or fire tones are activated, they have a way to receive that paging capability, their pagers will alert, and they screen the call to see if it is within the Creston Development. They have their internal response protocols for fire, EMS, the comments and the feedback from emergency service personnel is, has been very positive. Our folks know if they go to Creston, they're going to be directed from the time they enter the gate until the time that they leave, and that occurs 24 hours a day. This team also recently participated in the disaster exercise that was held at the county's emergency operations center last week. We had 78 folks in the room at the EOC, three of which were from Creston, testing their capability, having, participating in scenarios that were simulated in their development, and it was a testament to their work and certainly the partnership that our team in Creston has formed. So without further from me, I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Bush to come forward, he's one of the representatives we've worked with in Creston, appreciate all his work and his team.
I appreciate you allowing us to come and talk to you and sort of the recipients of some of the services. We're trying to sort of maybe take the burden off William and his folks a little bit, so we appreciate what, you know, what the county does, does for us, which you're allowing us to come and talk to us. You know, we really appreciate the first responders. We've worked very closely with some of the first responders, we know them by name, by face, and it's, it's paying dividends, and particularly William, who has really helped us out. And we do have, including myself, five people from our community here. We have, in the middle, now we've got Suzanne Fisher here, we have Claudia Brash, we have Bev Oxford, Marilyn Augustine, and then myself. I'm one of the three co-chairs of the CERT committee. Those three back there are also board members of our community, I'm on the board as well. And a little bit of who we are, I mean, we, as William said, we're about a mile or so from the Buncombe County line, so we're sort of out in the boonies, and we, we recognize that it's going to take some time for first responders to get to us, and recognizing that, we thought, you know, we have a couple of physicians that live in the community, recognizing that a cardiac event is a very time-critical event, and how can we help ourselves before the first responders get there? We don't try to take the place of first responders, we, that's not our intention, but it's sort of to bridge that gap between when they, you know, when they can show up. We have, in the community right now, there's 138 lots in our development, we have 46 houses in the develop right now, 26 of them are full-time residents. And just to give you a little bit of a sense, we have 29 people that are part of our CERT effort, and I think that tells you, gives you a little bit of an indication of the commitment that we have, okay? And one of the first things we did when we started the CERT effort is to sort of step back and take a look. We looked at our strengths, we looked at our weaknesses, and then sort of developed strategies on how we can help ourselves, and that's a lot of the work we've done with We have worked with William, with Chief Lidle, as I said, the, the fire chief for the Crooked Creek Volunteer Fire Department, we've met and talked to Captain Hancock, who's part of the, the first responders, the EMS folks there, he lives in, in Old Fort, and he said, he told us, he says, I'm going to jump in my car and I'm going to be the, one of the first ones there. Well, if it's at night, we went out and, we have people, as William said, that'll position themselves, we'll either lead the first responders in, or we'll, depending on the size of the emergency, we'll, you know, bring people in. But at night, I was at an event here a couple of years ago, and people were out there with flashlights in the parking lot directing us, you couldn't see the flashlight, and so we figured we needed something to help, you know, get people's attention, so this is what we went out and purchased. We also, to help be sure that we know, we have beepers, we have two beepers in the community, monitor them 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you know, it goes off in 3:00 in the morning, you know, my wife, because I carry one of them, you know, we wake up and listen to what the call is, okay? To communicate, you know, we talked to William, he said, you know, we're going to use, you know, text messages, and he said, that's fine until your batteries died or you don't have coverage or whatever. So the board supporting us, we went out and bought seven radios, these are, you know, four or $500 apiece radios, so we have a financial commitment also. The AEDs, you know, two of these are in the community where we can access them, somebody has an emergency, first thing in the protocol is somebody gets the AED and goes to where the site is. So that's just part of the work that we're doing here. We've had, as William said, we've had first aid training, CPR training, we've had two classes, you know, refresher class, we have a number of people that are CPR certified, which is helpful. We're just recently now getting into Stop the Bleed, we have, in fact, one of the choke, my co-chairs has just completed the training so we can do a Stop the Bleed in the community here, so if we have a bleeding event, we know how to, how to control that. And we've had some other people come in and talk to us, we've had people talk to us about wildlife, living with wildlife, and as William said, we're working right now with the, the Forest Service on the FireWise, which is looking and creating defensible space around your house, so if there's a fire, you know, we can have the firefighters go someplace else and we don't have to worry about the houses. Voluntary program, some people, you know, are more involved, want to do that, but there's a lot of community interest in doing that. So just to give you a flavor though of the type of things we're doing, but we're, we're excited, we're really pleased to be working with William and his folks, and we're hoping what we're doing as a community, you know, if we can share with other communities and show them what we're doing, we'd be glad to do that, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to, to answer them.
I was, I was driving a fire truck the night that Grandview Peaks caught on fire, and that was my first time in Grandview Peaks.
Yeah.
Guess what? I couldn't find the fire. You've talked to the Crooked Creek Fire Chief, and where your direction's come important is, and you have your, a house fire in there, you're going to have volunteers from half the county come.
Yep.
90% of them's never been in the gates, and if you're not there directing, the trained help will not get to the scene. That is the most important thing you can do, and I appreciate what you-
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Bush, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is a model, I'll just say this, this is a model that all gated subdivisions and, and that type of terrain need to, need to look at, and you're partnering with the best, our, our staff is tops in the state, and, you know, we, we're just impressed, I mean, Lynn's coming from a background of law enforcement, and, you know, Barry's been in, in, in the EMS for many years, and Matt, the fire, Tony just builds the houses, but anyway, he just builds them, but anyway-
Fireproof.
These are guys you see afterwards.
Yeah, these guys you see afterwards, but it's very impressive that you've taken ownership of where you live at, you've sought out the, the right people to partner with, as Matt said, you're getting the, you're, you're there to help get the people where they, they need to be, and I'm just flat out impressed. You've got the tools that you need to, to get the people where they need to go when they come, you're, you have a board that's in, having dialogue, communication, and out of 29 permanent, 29 permanent year-round residents, you've got 26 of them that are active in what you're doing, that's a home run, so.
Can you not get Gateway on board with you guys on that?
We've talked to them a little bit, yeah.
We've had a few conversations with them, and I think Tom mentioned Stop the Bleed program, this kind of a tease of what's to come, and shows the partnerships being able to be formed, but Dr. John Travers, who he said was his co-chair, is willing to roll the Stop the Bleed program out to the community. So he is scheduled, this will be a partnership between EMS, emergency management, and the folks at Creston, but he has additional instructors that are willing to assist him, and we plan on rolling Stop the Bleed program out, which is very important to churches, schools, and others for active shooter training, to how to save a life during one of those events. But we're taxed internally, we've got all these different programs going, and that's why it, it's so important for us to form the partnership externally, to bring these people in that have a specialty, that have a passion for this type of stuff, and at the end of the day, we've built a much stronger team and we're more resilient.
I'll say this, I appreciate you doing the FireWise program, and I'll tell you why, I put my fire hat on. You give a firefighter a chance to save your house when you participate in FireWise. If you don't, a lot of the time, it's too dangerous to put a firefighter into the scene because mother nature's going to win, and those that participate, I promise you, you're saving your house possibility one day.
You know, you mentioned Gateway a while ago, I had my students, I teach in the high school, so now I retired from EMS and saving lives and started teaching people to save lives. Part of our program, we have a degree program through the college emergency management, but we did a FireWise study last year, that was, we didn't, had no idea anything was going on, but there was only one FireWise community in this county, and that was Gateway, and that surprised me, and then here's Creston. But also, right now, I've got a CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Team, at the high school, and I would, I'm begging you to please come, our class, and speak to those, because actually we've got some firefighters within Old Fort and Crooked Creek that we're trying to recruit, maybe into the CERT, but the thing is, they were outlined, you know, instead of being more central, we were trying to work through the CERT program here with Marion Police Department, and, and, but if you have your card, I would like for you to come and do a special presentation to my class at the high school on that. We stepped out into Lake Tahoma with the FireWise community, and we got out physically, pool brush, cup brush, clean, clean gutters, and just for one hole, and I said, why do we, why are we not moving faster, or, but a lot of it's acceptability, because there is some money, you know, but in order to save a house, if it's my house- to save a house, if it's my house? Yeah.
YouTube contact.
Yes, please do, share that. And this week, next week, you're welcome to come and spend an entire week at the school.
Anytime, we'll be glad to be.
And we'll, we'll come on a field trip to Creston.
Excellent.
They'll love that.
Yeah.
They probably want you to feed them supper, so you better watch, because he's leaning up to a meal, I believe.
And I wouldn't not turn that down.
Can we take, can we get your board directors, it's here right in the middle, along with William, and commissioners, get a picture? Because this is something that's very positive right here, we need to highlight.
Oh, we're short.
There you go.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
One, one.
Thank you.
Great job.
Great job.
Are you?
Yeah.
Love to hear you.
Yes.
All right. We have a 6:15 appointment. Y'all, good evening, thanks for being here tonight. We have a 6:15 appointment, this is the, concerning the Charters of Freedom presentation. And Mr. Wood, if you don't mind to lead out, and whomever is here to present tonight, I've got a name, Ron Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, that's Ron Lewis, but our president and founder is here tonight, Vance Patterson.
Okay, Mr. Patterson.
He wanted to come to Waddell County himself.
Good, good.
So we're pleased to have him. Could we have just a few minutes to set up a PowerPoint?
You, we're good.
You're good to go?
We should be okay.
Yeah. If you can get those lights, Lynn. Vance, come on up, sir, it's good to have Mr. Patterson, the floor is yours, my friend.
It's, okay, it's getting there.
It's getting there.
I'll kick off while we're getting ready. We have been to conferences before, and sometimes you see, in the little trade show area, you see salespeople trying to sell you something, whether it's a new piece of software, or vehicles, or what have you. And a lot of times, you just, you just keep rolling. This is a group that has been at several conferences, Association of County Commissioners events, that kind of thing, that will, really stands out, as far as what they're doing, is a lot different than trying to sell you something. So we may need a technical.
Let's take a brief recess for a technical matter.
For y'all who don't know, I'm Vance Patterson. I'm from Burke County, I live about nine miles up the road, so I'm a neighbor of yours. Father of four, married 43 years to my wife, Mary Jo, she's a very understanding person. I'm a businessman, I have a company that makes industrial fans, actually make things out of metal, ship them around the country and around the world. I am a manufacturer. I'm going to tell you a story, lasts about six minutes, and then give you an idea of what, what this project is about, and then give you a real brief thought on what I see in the future. All right, good. About six years ago, my wife and I were up in Washington DC, visiting with some congressmen and some of the organizations up there. We had some free time, so we decided to go over to the National Archives, because we'd never seen the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution before. Now, those of you who've been there know that when you're kind of wandering down this hallway, looking at different exhibits, it then opens up into this big room. And there are these big bronze gates, you walk through those into this rotunda, and there are the founding documents on the other side. This is looking down on it. Declaration of Independence on your left, four pages of the Constitution in the middle, the Bill of Rights on the right. Now, one of the things I liked was, once you got in this room, there were no lines. You just wandered around, looking at different exhibits, and when you got a chance, you stepped up and looked at the founding documents. It was this time that we learned that these are what are known as your Charters of Freedom. Now, I don't know about you, but the first time I saw the Declaration of Independence, the original document, something in our, in our founding fathers' handwriting, and saw their signatures, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Rutledge, and the others, I just got goosebumps. And then when I moved over and saw the first page of the US Constitution, in the words, "We the people," I actually got a lump in my throat. It was really an emotional experience for me. And then you get, you move over and you see the Bill of Rights. Now, something you need to know about this, it really isn't the Bill of Rights. There is no historic document known as the Bill of Rights. What's on display up there are the first proposed 12 amendments, signed by the President John Adams, President of the Senate. The first two were never, were not ratified at the time, only the next 10. And those are what are known as your Bill of Rights. All right. Now, Mary Jo likes to read just about everything, so she's walking around reading and supporting documents, and it gives me a chance to step back and just kind of take everything in. I wanted to remember the feeling I had the first time I saw these documents. And two things occurred to me. First of all, that I'd probably never see them again, because it took me over 60 years to get there the first time. And second, most people will never see these documents. Even though it's free and open to the public, there's just so much to do up in Washington. All the other monuments, the government buildings, the museums, people just don't get a chance to get over to the National Archives. And then we left. Now, as you know, and mentioned, I ran for US Congress back in 2012, here in the 11th District. And I tell people, I never studied so much in all my life as when I was running for Congress, not in high school or college. Because, see, we were having sometimes two and three debates a week, over 17 counties. And you guys were asking questions about the economy, and the environment, and immigration, and taxes, and government, and foreign governments, and the military, and on and on. And to me, embarrassment is a tremendous motivator. I didn't want to be up in front of a group of 150 people and not be able to address a subject for at least two minutes. So I studied evenings and weekends. Well, one of the subjects you asked about, of course, was education. So I went back, did some research on education, learned that we had two founding fathers who were very big on education. Benjamin Franklin, who was an author, a musician, a printer, he was a postmaster, a scientist, an inventor, and truly a sage. He is the one that they would go to if they really got stuck on a problem, for his wisdom. And the other one was Thomas Jefferson. Of course, third President of the United States, actually penned most of the Declaration of Independence. And he was a farmer, he was a businessman, an inventor. He had a nail-making business, that was one of the few things he made money at, making nails for the construction industry. Well, these two believed that there should be three levels to education. First of all, a primary level, to teach our youth how to survive in the world. And that's where you get reading, writing, and arithmetic. A secondary level, to teach our youth how to survive in the world. And that's where you get into accounting, living languages, geography, history, and civics. And then the third, the more advanced level, was for science, arts professions, and what's known as a culture of virtue. Well, it came as no surprise that they were very big on civics and government. After all, they laid out a lot of what our government is based on right now. They believed that in order to have a free and independent society, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. Well, towards the end of my campaign, I remember Mary Jo and I were attending a National Day of Prayer service on the old Burke Courthouse green. We were sitting under the shade of this tree, and towards the end of the service, the thought came to me, what if I could duplicate the experience I had up in Washington? What if I could bring that experience back to the citizens of Burke County? First time I saw our documents. So later that year, after my campaign ended, I started working on a project, and it turned out to be an educational project. And this is the scope of the project, to design and build a replica of the Charters of Freedom setting up in Washington, in the national, in the rotunda. Bring that back, put it in a central location in Burke County, had to have high visibility, high foot traffic, and easy access for schoolchildren and veterans, because this is an education project. I wanted to display all three documents, Declaration of Independence on the left, four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights on the right. Well, it took two years to get it done. This is the site we picked. And one of the reasons is, that's the, that was the mayor's Christmas tree right there. So it had to be removed. But two years later, on July 2nd, 2014, we dedicated the first Charters of Freedom setting outside of Washington DC. Declaration of Independence on the left, Constitution in the middle, and Bill of Rights on the right. This is a granite setting. Now, it was so well-received, and Mary Jo and I enjoyed the process so much, we decided to gift another one to Cherokee County, as far west as you could go. This is in Murphy. This was dedicated late that year, September 17th, on Constitution Day. We did a third one in Buncombe County, and then we set up a 501(c)(3), known as Foundation Forward. Rumors were starting that I was going to run for Congress again, because all three of these were in western North Carolina. And I think my wife was starting to get nervous, so we decided to go north on the fourth one. We did one up in Jacksonville, Illinois, did the fifth one in Kokomo, Indiana, sixth one down in Columbia, South Carolina. To date, we had, we have dedicated 13 settings. We have six more coming out of the ground right now, with 26 planned so far for this year. Now, these things are not just sitting there. We go down three, three and a half feet in the ground for, for a foundation. We set rebar, poured concrete, so you've got a reinforced poured concrete pad. Then we come up, we frame it, again, reinforced poured concrete. That centerpiece right there is just the core and the foundation, weighs over 38,000 pounds, over 19 tons. These are not going to be pushed over and drug away. These are going in at a permanent location. Around that goes the fascia, or this is a brick fascia, four inches of brick. The documents, there are six documents, each one is on quarter-inch etched bronze, each one weighs over 60 pounds. These are set, then the document chamber is in, cap goes on, and then the glass goes on top of that. We use a quarter, a half inch of treated polycarbonate, which is unbreakable and virtually bulletproof. I tell people, please don't try it. This is what a finished setting looks like, with the trim around the documents and all the plaques in place.
Unfortunately, a lot of people don't get to go to Washington DC and see our founding documents.
So many people that I talk to don't know what the Charters of Freedom are. When we explain, they say, "Oh, yeah, 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 I've heard about those." It's very important that the students not only know about the history, but why they should have pride in these documents.
Back in 2011, my wife and I were up in Washington DC, visiting with some congressmen and some of the organizations up there. We had some free time, so we decided to go over to the National Archives. You walk through these big bronze gates into this rotunda, and there are the founding documents over on the other side of the room. These are known as your Charters of Freedom. The first time I saw the Declaration of Independence, something our founding fathers had actually penned, and saw their signatures, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, John Adams, Rutledge, and the others, I just got goosebumps. I remember the thought came to me, what if I could duplicate the experience I had up in Washington, the first time we saw the Charters of Freedom? What if I could bring that experience back to the citizens of Burke County? Then, on July 2nd, 2014, we dedicated the first Charters of Freedom monument outside of Washington DC.
From an educational standpoint, for our children to actually see it within their home counties, be able to touch it, feel it, and view it, it's a huge deal for veterans, as well as for our children.
Imagine, if you will, third and fourth grade schoolteachers bringing their classes here for annual field trips, to learn a little about the documents, a little about our government, our founding fathers, and also about state and local history while they're here.
I think with the educational system, teachers and educators are sometimes limited by the materials and just time. So to be able to provide teachers with the educational materials that they can use to kind of focus their visits to these sites, that's exciting to me.
When they talk of their Charters of Freedom in their hometown, remembering that their fourth grade schoolteacher took them down and taught them about the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence, we're in the beginning of what could be a massive re-education of our founding principles.
Our goal as a foundation is to set monuments in as many communities as possible over the next nine years, to provide access to our founding documents in the communities, so the children and people of these communities don't have to go all the way to Washington DC to experience these documents in a proper setting. But they will no longer talk about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington. They'll be talking about their Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with, right in their home community. There are 3,142 counties, boroughs, parishes, independent cities, census zones, and a district of Columbia in the United States. As I said, our goal as a foundation is to set monuments or these settings in as many of those communities as possible over the next 10 years. Once it is set, we have our dedication. We work with the county, usually lasts about 35, 40 minutes, the dedication. It includes law enforcement, here it is, Burke County, Veterans Group of Burke County, students at Hanover College, these are just some of the pictures, children celebrating at the event, families signing in for the time capsule, all signatures go in the time capsule. Time capsule is opened on September 17th, 2087, which is the 300th anniversary of our US Constitution. All time capsules will be open the same day, which means it should be a pretty interesting day. We have high school bands and choirs that'll perform, Boy Scouts presenting colors, county commissioners shooting the cannons, which is a lot of fun. And I've seen some real turn in attitudes about when they shoot those cannons, they just, they turn into kids again. Patriotic music. But once the, once the construction's finished, and the celebrations are done, this is what it's all about. It's about education of our youth, it's about local access for families to create life memories, foundation for our future leaders. And here's a shot, this is just last week, where Ben Franklin, who's in the room here, had a, had a group of students out. This is up in Fort Thomas, Kentucky, with students. This is Commissioner Joe Belcher, downtown Asheville, with a group of students. My goal for the next few years is to go right across North Carolina, do everything, all the, all 100 counties in North Carolina, then do all 46 counties in South Carolina. So everybody around the country is saying, "What is going on in the Carolinas?" The funding is in place. What we're here for tonight is to ask you all to consider accepting this gift and providing a good location, suitable location for it, here in MacNell County.
Okay. Mr. Patterson, we appreciate that presentation, we appreciate your desire to get, get back to where it all started at. In America, we, we've lost the way. We've forgotten where it all started at. Lawmakers change and try to modify. You see, all across America, people are tearing down statues. Listen, that's historical to the era, and, and you, you don't go erasing history. History may not be pleasant, but history is history, and, and you learn from history. And I, for one, am totally appalled at people who would tear down monuments just because they disagree with somebody else's opinion or viewpoint. I mean, listen, have good, fair, open debate, but let the monument stand, is my take on it. And I, for one, Commissioner, I'll let these commissioners talk, but I, for one, will graciously accept your donation and look forward to finding a very high-profile, suitable spot that our schoolchildren, veterans, whomever can go, look at, read, those, those documents that are etched in the bronze, and I think just, and I appreciate you and your board, your foundation, your commitment to the preservation of history. I'll just end my comments with that. Lynn, go ahead, we'll start with you down there.
I can't tell you what it's done for me, for you to offer this. About two months ago, I started studying the Constitution of the United States, and then I went to the Constitution of North Carolina. I was looking for an answer to give somebody. I started looking at the Constitution to find what they were talking about, and I learned that it's not there. We've heard so many things through the years, that the Bible says this, or the Bible says that, or the Constitution says this, and the Constitution says that. The only way to know is go look. There's a lot of things that I've heard all my life that I have found is not there. When my son earned a Medal of Valor in Afghanistan, it did something else for me. When my son earned a Medal of Valor in Afghanistan, it did something else for me. It made me more patriotic than I've probably ever been, because I learned the price of freedom. And a lot of people say, "Why does yours have to go? Well, why not? Why shouldn't it be mine, and why shouldn't it be yours that fight for our freedom?" Our children need to be educated on what the Constitution of the United States guarantees them. I've been told that as an elected official, I have to do this, or I have to do that. It is not in the Constitution. It's not there. But it does guarantee my right as an individual citizen of the United States. And I'm, I'll dig the hole by hand for free.
They're doing that in Henderson right now, digging it by hand.
Be glad to do it.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Brown is a veteran, so go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, you don't know how it touches my heart, just to hear this, the commitment you've made to do this, to share this with our state, with our county, and, you know, and as a veteran, you know, when that American flag goes up, it's special to me, you know. Every time I look at the, and I know Louis, he's a veteran as well, but, you know, it does something just special to those of us that have served. And I know it does to everybody, but there's a special thing there for those of us that have served. And this Constitution, and what the Bill of Rights, what you're talking about doing here, when we went recently, went up to Washington DC, just to stand in, you know, in front of the White House, and to walk where some great people, the founders of our nation, had walked and stepped and lined state, and we got to view and witness all that. And it just does something to you, but thank you so much for what you're doing.
Okay, Mr. Peters.
Wow, how do you say anything else, everybody else has already said. And I was going to tag you on too. It took me 52 years to get to go to Washington DC. I had an aunt that was Secretary for Senator Jesse Helms, her husband worked in the Pentagon as a senior master sergeant in the Air Force, retired, and, you know, that trip meant something to me. It came back, and my daughter, you know, she says, "I can't believe you went to the White House." That's my goal. She wanted to see Donald Trump, so she wanted to do, you know, but they, I mean, it makes you almost want to cry, honestly. If it disturbs me to see people take and burn the flag of the United States, it irks me to no extent. We have laws on the book, all they got to do is enforce them of burning that flag. Those constitut, that, when you sit there and look at the Constitution of the United States, and the Bill of Rights, and even the Bible, you know, people destroy the Bible, you know, that really, that does something to me deep down inside. If you care for this country like you say you do, okay? And when I, in teaching in high school, we sat down, we tried to look back over history, I love North Carolina history too. I didn't, I didn't realize how important it was, till really, they're not teaching a lot of that anymore. McDowell County history is pretty intriguing to me. North Carolina history, you know, we go down and watch the Lost Colony play, my kids said, "I don't understand this." I said, "I do. We studied that in class." And I physically got to see a part of that program before me. This is amazing. We were talking a while ago about locations, I want, let's see, and whatever it may be is where the most people can see that. And we've got different monuments, you know, here on Courthouse Lawn and at the Senior Center, but I want it to be where thousands of people, 80,000 people travel through this courthouse.
Courthouse Lawn.
And I'm sitting there, I mean, we put a manger scene up, we don't have problems standing for godly principles, okay, and what is right. And that's part of this, that's the reason our country was founded, our country was founded on godly principles. And we've gotten so far liberal into the left-wing side, that it's pathetic that we will not stand up as citizens against things, and stand up for our Constitution, and stand up for what is right.
One thing that might surprise you is, we've had these in for four years now, and we've had no graffiti on them, nothing.
They better not.
No, they better not, not in front of us.
But I mean, it's, it's, they're all, you know, over the country, and it's always a concern, graffiti and stuff like that, and there's been nothing.
You know, a couple of years ago, they came and done a presentation, "God, we trust." It's on our patrol cars, it's on our ambulances, it's on our county buildings.
Our fire trucks.
Our fire trucks.
You done?
I'm done. I don't have else to say.
We take an oath at office when we get elected, says that we will uphold the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and I take that seriously. And I appreciate what you're offering our citizens to see, and this is something that I definitely approve, and I want to see it here.
Yes, sir.
Keep in mind, this is an education project. We avoid using the term monument. We call this, it's an active, hands-on educational supplement.
Right.
Because it is active, you know, it's meant to be used in the education as a supplement to your curriculum. And Dr. Streeter here is our Director of Education, and he will be working with your schools and, you know, not trying to change curriculum or anything, but just offering this as a supplement to what's being taught.
How can individuals help support your effort?
That would be working with Ron. At, you know, I wanted to take that one that said funding in places out, because I wanted to take that, because you guys are so healthy over here with that. I mean, 24,000 a month, that's 300,000 a year almost, and then 4% of $4 million is another 160,000, and I'm running the numbers, and here I've, I don't have to give it away.
You want to move McDowell County, don't you?
Yeah, it's only nine miles away.
It is real close.
But as far as, we offer community support, you know, not necessarily looking for money and stuff like that, but anybody that wants to help support this, you know, we do have a donors program where they can be, have their names, you know, in the time capsule or on the dedication plaque, that type of thing. But Ron will work with that, and Ron and David, so, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions about any of it?
No, just moving forward, what's the next step, Mr. Wooten?
I think talking with Mr. Lewis, whoever the appropriate contact is, identifying a site and location.
What happens is, once you pick out a site, we'll send you a letter of intent that says, "We intend to gift this to the county to be placed on this site that you've picked out." And then you send back a letter of intent that says, "We will accept that gift at this site," and then boom, it goes. It's, the only thing the county has to do is do the site preparation, which means remove the Christmas tree, or any power lines, or water lines, or anything like that. We do all the excavation, we just can't do power lines. And we do the whole thing turnkey, and then any landscaping that you want to put in afterwards. You just want to plant grass, that's fine, or we'll work with you on designs and stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate you.
If it's okay, I can talk to Mr. De Poister about different county sites. I heard Courthouse Lawn mentioned as a possibility.
Yeah, we'll be very specific, we want it either the courthouse, because that's one of your most high-traveled areas, or the Senior Center, there's a monument out there, and this will be living history, something where they can get school bus kids in and out, people that can get up to it. But to me, the most level spots you've got is up here at the courthouse yard somewhere.
Yeah.
Just looking, I did pull it up.
But it's probably, what's the dimensions? It looks pretty big.
I think you can have some justice on.
About 24 by 8.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So they're, depending on how big you want to make it, but we can look at the courthouse site and maybe do some flagging of what it would look like out there, and then maybe the Senior Center, and then bring, have some side visits.
Get their input too, forward pictures so they can look at that and review it.
Certainly.
The Constitution's 12 feet long, and the side documents are four, so just how it sets up.
Do you mind, Vance, we get, the board gets a picture with you and your board members that are here, foundation members?
Sure.
Yeah, let's get y'all right in the middle right here. Of course, now, you know, we have our official dedication, big ceremony and all that, you'll be there again, let's get y'all right in the middle.
Manager.
Let me get you right on the side for you. All right, let's get y'all right there, we'll be right behind you. Let's circle them tight now.
Tony, you may have squeezed in a little bit.
This will be on social media, we'll forward it to the newspaper, I'll say. Twitter, Brett may be tweeting on this, I don't know. Thank you, Vance.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks for your contribution.
All right, guys, what a positive thing, positive presentation. Just, we're excited as a board to move forward with this project and look forward to.
It's emotional, isn't it?
To what?
It's almost emotional.
I know, I know. Okay, let's move to item E, under New Business, this will be the opioid litigation update. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. The next item on the opioid, as you mentioned, last month, the board authorized moving forward and joining that multi-jurisdictional litigation.
Take care.
You have about the first three pages of about 145-page documents, I didn't include all of it. But if you'd like to see it all, as far as the complaint, we'll be glad to send it to you. But Mr. Coats has reviewed all 160 pages, I'm sure, and has given his endorsement to move forward with filing the complaint, which will be done in the next day or two. My understanding from Mr. Siegel is that it will be filed in Asheville, and they will file a motion for it then to be combined with the litigation there in Ohio. There's a lot of national news outlets writing about that case, so there's a tremendous amount of interest in what's going on there. So it's proceeding, and we'll provide monthly updates.
Just as a side note, at the Child Abuse Awareness Proclamation's Day at DSS, me and Tony sat at a table, and the Sabre Rock and the crowd over the mission on Men's Shelter and the Friendship Home, we had a good conversation with their paid staff and their director. And they said that the big thing they're seeing is people coming in because of the opioid abuse now. And so I thought that was interesting, that you hear, that's what we're hearing all across America from people affected of all loss of life, and then to hear them on the front lines tell us that today. So it's a major, major problem. So we look forward to how we can help combat that, and with more information to come through the lawsuit. Let's move to our next item, item A, under New Business, the industrial park property discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Wooten.
Yes, sir. For those that have been around for a while, Site 3 is a label that's been mentioned, I think, in this boardroom maybe years ago. The county had developed a site there, probably about 10 years ago, graded a site, and it was essentially split in two. The front half of that tract was provided to a company as part of an incentive package, and the rear section has been marketed. One of the things, and I could have mentioned it when Mr. Abernathy was here, but one of the things he's noticed is that that rear site is just a little too small for, to be marketed appropriately. Most companies want just a little more acreage. And so he has contacted that front property owner, and he has surplus property that he's willing to give back at no cost. The only cost would be the survey and the deed preparation. So total, you're looking at about $2,000 to get about two acres there that's graded in that industrial part, and so.
Okay, comments or questions by board members?
Make a motion, we proceed.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye to oppose, light sign. Thank you, Mr. Wooten. Let's go to item B, this is the discussion of volunteers at the animal shelter. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Probably going about, about five or six months ago, we had hired our new shelter manager at the animal shelter, and one of the goals that she mentioned in that hiring process was that she would like to see at some point, community volunteers being brought in. And in that process, you know, we talked about some of our history, and some of the reasons we hadn't had volunteers. One of those was that for years and years and years, our understanding was that it was a very large liability concern, and our liability coverage would not allow us to do that. And so we did look into that a little bit further, talked to our liability carrier, and they said, "Actually, it's not liability, it's workers' comp." So another insurance you have to think about. So we went down that rabbit hole and talking to a workers' comp provider, and they said, "It's not really a big deal. You look at your volunteer hours, and you, you know, just add them to what we're paying in a year." So not a huge cost in that area. So, you know, we've just been preparing information, I guess, to present to you, but, so, we, you know, reported back to the staff person there that it's not a large cost.
What is the cost, by the way, roughly?
It would be in the hundreds of dollars a year.
Oh, my.
You look at the grand scheme of things, as far as, you know, employees work about 2,080 hours a year, and we wouldn't probably cross that threshold with volunteers. So it's very minimal as far as what you're talking about. So it's almost more, it's not really a monetary issue, it's a management issue. So you would need a program, you would need staff that could handle having volunteers. And so we, we have talked at the staff level, you know, we've met with different various groups, you know, a presentation last month from a group interested in helping with this. But there are numerous humane societies and groups out there that have volunteer programs that you can kind of follow as far as, you know, what's the right thing to do. And speaking with our staff, they don't want to get people in there that have never been around animals, of course, don't know what to do, so they would want to proceed slowly as well.
If you could just get us what the guidelines would be, get that back to the board so we can review that. I've got no problem individually, is staffs in favor, minimal cost, just, it has to be communicated that we're willing to try this.
Right.
But if it doesn't work out, we go back to where we was at prior to that. I mean, but get, let us sign off on the, what's going to be the agreement, whatever that would be.
Yes, sir. We'll bring in what other counties are doing as far as models, and bring those to you in the next.
And we appreciate them being willing to help out, that's a great thing.
Yes, sir.
Sounds great. Let's move to item three, item three, item C, under New Business, this will be the Bob's Creek Grant Application. Go ahead, Mr. Wooten.
Right, so we talked earlier about grants, a lot of times, we will contact nonprofits and ask for them to apply for projects on our behalf, and we've had the opposite happen this time. Very, very brief history, the state is in the process of purchasing several thousand acres in the Glenwood community to form what would be called Bob's Creek State Natural Area, sort of like a precursor to a state park. There's additional acreage that they're trying to get together to purchase, so it would be like the phase two of this property. Foothills Conservancy, who we work with, have worked with on numerous projects, Catawba Falls, different freeway projects, et cetera, they have contacted and asked if the county would sponsor, again, backwards, but if we would sponsor a $100,000 grant to help towards that purchase.
Okay, comments, questions?
Move with it.
Got a motion right here?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye to oppose, light sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's go to item D, Catawba Falls Grant Contract. Mr. Wooten, go ahead.
Right, speaking of Catawba Falls, we've worked with the Forest Service on numerous projects to improve access and safety at Catawba Falls Trail. The latest application through the recreational trails program would improve the trail there and assist with extractions when necessary. And again, there's no county dollars in this grant, just staff time as far as passing through funds.
Okay, comments, questions?
Motion.
Okay, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye to oppose, light sign. Let's look at item E, the administrative items, go ahead, Mr. Wooten.
Right, you have one request from Relay for Life Committee, for a number of years you have sponsored that event, and your sponsorship has taken the form of tipping fee waiver. And so they would ask that you waive the tipping fee, and it's probably $300 or $400 for that event.
Okay, what's the board's approval request?
Motion.
Second. Okay.
Motion to approve request.
Okay. We got a second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great, aye to oppose, light sign. Okay.
Then you have a couple of amendments I'll go through quickly. GF42 appropriates revenue in elections. GF43 appropriates revenue and transfers line items and emergency services. GF44 transfers between line items and facility maintenance. GF45 transfers between line items and the juvenile justice line item. CP2 appropriates fund balance for the planning board. Water Enterprise, NWENT1 allocates. Water Enterprise, NWENT 1 allocates revenue in the water fund. And 911 F4 appropriates 911 fund balance.
Okay, comments, questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move that we approve the amendments as presented.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye to pose like sign. Let's move to board appointments. We have the library board, they have an opening, it's the first reading, and the tourism authority has two board vacancies, this is the first reading also. So we'll move on to the next item. Item H, the statewide school bond referendum.
You do have tax matters.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tax matters.
And those are routine.
You seen them, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye to pose like sign. Okay, item H, statewide school bond referendum resolution. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Thursday night, Commissioner Green and I, and our esteemed clerk, Mitchell, went to the regional meeting in Yadkin County. Association of County Commissioners is asking every county and every school board and every Chamber of Commerce to pass a resolution requesting that there be a school bond, a statewide school bond this November. You have some information. For our county, it would provide about $9 million for our county if it were to pass, and I'm sure that could be spent on a number of projects. One very large one comes to mind, in the Old Ford project. So you do have a model resolution attached. We'd ask you to approve, and we will forward that.
Side note, too, at our joint education committee meeting Thursday, school board, the college, chairmen and members from each board, they are present. This was brought up, and the school is looking at building the new school in Old Ford, $18 million. And it'd be nice to have this passed, so we can get $9 million to go towards helping repay that debt. So anyway, what's the pleasure of the board?
We approve the resolution.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move to our last item, well, two more items. This is item I, added item, the Child Abuse Awareness Month. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir. You got some statistics to share.
Yes, I do. Ms. Lisa Sprouse was kind enough to provide some statistics, and some are very sobering. Just wanted to mention for child abuse awareness. For 2017, and some of this is foster care and some isn't, but we had 120 children in foster care in 2017. We had a number of neglect reports, 365 as a matter of fact. We had 14 children that came into care due to positive drug screens, and this is children that were testing positive, not the parents. We had, and the parents that tested positive for some sort of substance were 72. We did have some good news. We had 35 adoptions last year. We have 26 children that are waiting to be adopted, and those are children that are clear for adoption and that have placement waiting, just waiting for the process. And currently, we have 29 foster parents on our roll. So there's some sobering statistics in there, but some positives. And Chairman Walker mentioned this morning to that group, which was definitely a friendly group, but we always encourage, whenever we have an opportunity for folks to sign up for our MAP training, which is foster parent training, that there's always a need, and always will be a need. We hope there wouldn't be a need, but it seems to just be persistent.
Well, and you know, we do have on our board, Commissioner Green has been a foster parent.
Adopted a daughter.
Yeah, adopted a daughter. You're a foster parent. Ashley's adopted. I'm a foster parent, active, we've adopted. So I would encourage anybody watching to go ahead and call DSS and take 10 classes. The classes are, I enjoy going to the classes. They meet of an evening during the week, so if you work a full-time job, you can go. Then you have to get your house checked out, nothing major. Go get the paperwork filled out, and your phone will ring. They will call you with children that need a safe place, guaranteed. So definitely, definitely, people watching, become a foster parent. McDowell County needs you. Greater than McDowell County, though, the kids need you. These kids need a safe place to go. Hopefully, the parents get their act together, and they're able to reunite, do the plan like the judge says, DSS has planned out, and do the plan, get the kids back. That's the goal. But unfortunately, that's not reality. So we do need people who are interested. So with that being said, the board has a proclamation before us tonight, and this proclamation is Child Abuse Awareness Month, the proclamation saying this will be the month that we put a special focus on child abuse in McDowell County. And Vice Chairman Peters is going to read that proclamation tonight for us.
Child Abuse Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding a solution requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of McDowell County. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects, it can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors or conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in McDowell County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families, adopted this ninth day of April 2018.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Peters. So here again, be involved, be a part of the solution to the problem. At this time, we've got citizen comment, and if we have anyone who wishes to speak tonight, just come on up and feel free to sign your name and your topic. Let's see if we have anyone else present that wishes to speak. Okay, there being none. Ashley, any other reports, communications you have for us? And then we need to adjourn to April 30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There being motion that we adjourn to April 30? Oh, wait, one more thing, I forgot. Commissioner Crawford's last meeting is tonight. He's accepted a job in another county, so Matt, we wish you the very best, okay?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Now, do I hear a motion?
Did you have something?
That was just the 30th.
Okay.
Move with your.
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye to pose like sign.